I call to order the November 22, 2016, meeting of the Arvada Planning Commission. Ms. Brown, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Randy Caswell.
Present.
T.O. Owens. David Goff.
Here.
John Kraus.
Here.
Patricia Connell. John Sullivan. Steve Hannan.
Here.
I move to excuse Mr. Owens, Ms. Connell, and Mr. Sullivan. Commission members, please cast your votes. The motion is approved. The minutes of the November 8, 2016, meeting have been submitted for approval. Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved as printed. There are no general business items to discuss this evening. Will you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We're going to move to petitions and communications. This is a time when anyone may address the commission regarding items that are not listed as public hearings on tonight's agenda. The public hearings scheduled on tonight's agenda are the Ridge Center, Arvada Ridge Apartments, Outline Development Plan, Preliminary Development Plan, and Height Exception. Additionally, we ask that you hold comments you may have regarding any application that has been filed with the city or is likely to be filed with the city until the public hearing on those items, where we will welcome your comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the commission regarding anything Seeing none, then we will move to public hearings. At this time, I'd like to explain the procedure for public hearings. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation. After the presentation, I will ask those in favor of the application to speak than those in opposition to speak. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. After all the testimony has been heard, the public input portion of the hearing will be closed, and questions will be taken from the planning commission. I would now like to swear in anyone who wishes to speak in any public hearing matter before this commission this evening. Please rise, raise your right hand, and I will swear you all in now. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give in matters before this commission is the truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please answer "I do."
I do.
Thank you. You can be seated. The public hearings on tonight's agenda, which will be heard concurrently, include ODP 2016-002 Ridge Center Outline Development Plan Amendment 9, PDP 2016-0002 Arvada Ridge Apartments Number 2 Preliminary Development Plan, and HE 216 Arvada Ridge Apartments Number 2 Height Exception. Staff, are there any posting or notification requirements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman, there were both posting and mailing requirements, as well as notification to the several mental rights holders. I have all of the paperwork indicating that all of those requirements have been satisfied.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the staff report?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The staff report, posting log, and affidavit of mailing are made a permanent part of the record. I believe we have a presentation from the planning departments.
Thank you. Embry Partners is requesting an Outline Development Plan Amendment, a Preliminary Development Plan, and a Height Exception in order to construct a 296-unit apartment community. The site is currently zoned PUD-BPR, which is Planned Unit Development, Business, Professional, and Residential, and is within the Ridge Center Outline Development Plan. The Outline Development Plan Amendment that you'll hear tonight is for a slight density increase up to 27 units per acre. The 2014 Comprehensive Plan designates this site for mixed use. This residential development will provide one element of the uses within the larger context of the Ridge Outline Development Plan. The Comprehensive Plan anticipates that the 35-foot height limit will need to be exceeded in certain cases within this mixed-use category. The Arvada Transit Station Framework Plan designates this site for multifamily development at a density between 20 and 60 units per acre in three-to-six-story height structures with a small neighborhood park. The site is also within the Ralston Fields Urban Renewal Area. The Ralston Fields Urban Renewal Plan establishes that the site will develop as a multifamily residential development. The intention in this area is to establish a transit-oriented residential neighborhood with close, easy connections to commuter rail. A Height Exception and modifications to setbacks, architectural landscaping, and parking standards are proposed in order to meet the intent of these plans. Staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions as outlined in the staff report. We have the applicant and the landowner in the audience in order to make a presentation and to answer any questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to landowner Rich Schierberg.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your time this evening. My name is Rich Schierberg, and I am the owner of the land that we're going to be talking about today. As a matter of fact-
Can I stop you for one moment and just have you spell your name and give your address for the record?
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Rich Schierberg, S.C.H.I.E.R.B.U.R.G., 1580 Lincoln Street, Denver, 80203.
Thanks so much.
Sure. How many of you on the commission were around when Ridge Home was around? One? Two? Well, then you know what's happened there. I was awarded a contract from the State Land Board in October of 1995 to oversee the management, the security, the insurance, the cleanup, the demolition, the zoning, the development of the 330 Ridge parcel in 1995. The contract was signed with the state, mine was, in 1996. From 1997 to the year 2000, I lobbied the Capital Development Committee to be the sponsor of the bill that funded the $5.25 million cleanup that was necessary to get this site in a position to develop, and which I started doing just about 2001. I started with, if you could turn around, I'll kind of show you this. The first phase was a single-family, and between, on the backside of this hill, in this area here, there is close to 400 single-family units that, when they were built, started at the price range of $275, and now are selling for over $1.5 million. The second phase, that started in 2003, were these condominiums here, 120 units. They were priced in the 200s at the time, and now they're in the 300s. The third phase was the 245,000-square-foot, super-target, anchored retail center that was built, started in 2005, finished in 2006. It also includes pads along Kipling Street, which consists of six restaurants, a bank, and a Big Five sporting goods store. The center is 97 percent leased and provides a great amenity to the immediate neighborhood. The next phase was the Arvada Station 1 Apartments, which Embry Partners and myself joint-ventured in 2011 and 2012. That's 378 units. It's been completely full ever since we opened the doors. I think it's probably the best, one of the best located, and hopefully the best quality project in Arvada, apartment project, until we build the next one across the street. And then the last phase will be this 11-acre parcel that we're presenting in front of you tonight. So, from 1995 to here now, 2016, I've kind of been involved in this parcel of land personally for a long period of time. And candidly, I'm proud of the way it turned out. I have an aerial that I got to, our architect, late, that I was going to show you upfront, which showed you what this land looked like before I started doing anything, with the 42 buildings that were on this parcel when I took it over, that were part of the Ridge Home property. What you're going to hear tonight is a plan to develop this very last parcel. This is the last parcel under my control out of the 236 acres of the Ridge Home property. And what you'll see tonight is a proposal to build 296 Class A apartment units in a four-story configuration. It's been designed to complement the property across the street, but also with the light rail in line providing what we think is the proper project to accomplish the transit-oriented development on this site. Similar, well, actually, this is the third time that I've been involved with Embry in completing a multifamily project on land that I've owned. And the reason I picked Embry is pretty simple. First of all, they've been in Denver for over 20 years. I've known Walter and Jeff for over 20 years. Their reputation can't be more sterling. High-quality construction, appealing architecture, great curb appeal, aggressive and professional management, outstanding landscaping, and just an overall great developer. And I'm pleased to be doing this now for the third time with Embry on this last project in this parcel that I have been waiting to for so long. So, I want to introduce Jeff Booth with Embry Partners now, and he could take us on to the next step of what's going to happen on this site. But thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Members of the planning commission, I'm Jeff Booth, J.E.F.F.B.O.O.T.H., 1020 Northeast Loop 410, Suite 700, San Antonio, Texas. I've been fortunate to be the partner responsible for development activities in Denver for the last 20 years for Embry, and like Rich said, we've known each other about 20 years and collaborated on several record-setting performances, actually, in some of the developments we've done with Rich. And we're humbled to be, again, here in the city of Arvada with Rich to put really the final touch to the masterpiece he had the vision for back in 1995. It's really amazing to look at where this started and where it's come with Rich's leadership and his attention to detail. You drive around the entire development, and just little things that he's done are different than the way most developers do it, and we're really proud to be associated with Rich and that he selected us. When he could have picked anybody in the country, would have jumped at the chance to partner with him on this land, and here we are again for another round. So, we're very humbled to be here to take advantage of this and do something special and different, and differentiate the next project from the last one, which is going to be hard to top because the Arvada Station 1 project is probably the most consistently successful project in the 43-year history of Embry Partners. Like Rich said, it's maintained about 96%, 97% occupancy since we opened the doors. I drove through there this evening right at dusk, and it still just, you know, makes me proud to drive through and watch people coming home, see the lights on inside the units, see what they look like, how they decorated, they're hanging their Christmas lights, they're walking in and grabbing their dog and walking out through the open spaces, and the lifestyle ambiance that was created there, it's neat to see people taking advantage of it. And it really makes you feel very small that you have an opportunity to do this kind of thing. So, I also want to commend the staff, especially Cheryl Drake. This is our second round with Cheryl. Your staff is probably the most diligent and passionate at doing their jobs of protecting the city, laying out the goals for the city, what the city expects, and driving us to meet those standards, and just, you know, every step of the way, arm-in-arm with us, guiding us through the process, and showing us the way to make the tweaks we need to make to necessarily fit in the guidelines of the city. And it's a pleasure to see, like I said, their passion and their professionalism, and I think the collaboration with our team and our design talent, together with them, Arvada Station 1 is a classic example of what that does, and we're looking forward to making the next project even better, and it's going to be better. We took a stab at trying to figure out what the design should look like. We didn't want it to look like Phase 1. You know, if you've experienced Phase 1, it's very much kind of a mountain lodge theme that we thought really fit together well with the retail center architecture and the neighborhoods. But the next phase, as we drove around it, you've got the light rail station now, which has a very modern architectural touch to it. You've got the new expansion of Round Rocks Community College, Red Rocks, Round Rocks, that's a Texas, I'm sorry about that. But Red Rocks Community College and their new design, very contemporary, and we felt like we needed to have a different twist to really make it feel like it blended with the surroundings there versus what we did across the street. So, what you're going to see is a theme that we came up with. It's very much more or less kind of an urban prairie design that's, you know, kind of has its beginnings in some Frank Lloyd Wright-type images, and you'll see that later as our architects get up here and make their presentations. So, we're really excited about the layout, the site plan, the way it camouflages the parking, the elevations, a completely different kind of product, four-story with elevator-served buildings and heated corridors, which is a completely different approach than the first phase, and really an upgraded product where all of the units are upgrade class, where the first phase, we had two different styles of unit. I mean, our usual signature-class units are very classy, Class A product finishes that you would see anywhere, but the Signature Plus finishes are another step up with all hard surfaces. And at that point, you know, granite was in vogue, and so we went from plastic laminate tops in the kitchens and baths and a lot of the product to granite, and now we're taking the next step up, and all the kitchens and baths should be quartz. So, we're really taking this product so that the entire product is 100% upgrade units, and that's really what we saw the demand in the first phase. We're usually very, very good at assessing who the renters are going to be and what they're going to demand in the way the finishes, the unit types, the unit mix, ones, twos, and threes. But as successful as the first phase was, we felt like we could even be more successful now, looking back on that experience, which units were in the most demand, what sizes, et cetera. So, it's a different size product, different unit types, and again, like I said, you get the heated and cooled corridors, as well as the, as well as some direct access garages. So, I'm going to introduce our design team. They'll be able to go through various phases, and then we'll come back up to circle back and see if you have any questions. On our design team, which, by the way, we're relationship people, you know, we've built a great relationship with your teams here at the city, and our design team, many of the designers I'm going to introduce and consultants, we've also been doing work with for 20 years here in Denver. So, it really becomes a nice hand-in-glove type of fit. Everybody knows what's expected, and it makes it easy because they know the kind of quality we're expecting out of them. So, I'm going to bring Doug Reed up in just a second. He's our planning consultant. Doug's going to come up and make a presentation. Our architects, Chris Grady and David Beckner, are here. This is the same architects that did the Phase 1. Our civil engineer is represented by John Stafford. John Norris, our landscape architect, has done every project in Colorado with the exception of one we did in Colorado Springs. And then our traffic engineer, Devin Joslin, is here as well. So, I'm going to bring Doug up to begin the story of telling the story of what the product is and how we're moving through this, and then we'll circle back for any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Doug Reed, R.E.E.D. Address is Fine Line Consulting, 584 South Race Street, Denver, Colorado, 80209. I am the consultant who has worked with Embry on this project and several other in Colorado for amending the zoning and achieving site plan approval for this particular project. Very excited about this one. My portion of the presentation is unfortunately the dullest of these because it's going through the criteria for approval. You'll greatly enjoy the images that follow for the architectural portion. So, the first piece of this is the amendment to the Outline Development Plan. The graphic that you see is the existing Outline Development Plan, which we amended in 2008 to allow the Arvada Station project. The yellow indication you see around the perimeter is the perimeter of the original Ridge Center Outline Development Plan. The portion that we're dealing with is the orange-ish color up in the upper right-hand corner. In the current zoning, that piece of property is designated as 12.2 acres with a maximum density of 26 dwelling units per acre, which yields a maximum of 317 units. With this amendment, we are changing that ever so slightly. So, again, there is the highlighted portion. The actual, the maximum number of units is actually being reduced as a result of the math here, but the parcel itself, after the dedication of Ridge Road, drops to 11.22 gross acres, and then drops again to 10.73 acres after the dedication for Lee Street, which will occur along with this plat and development plan. So, with those two reductions in acreage, the unit density changes from 27 units per acre to 28 units per acre on a gross basis after the final dedication. So, really, that is the only reason for amending the Outline Development Plan, is to adjust those acreage numbers and the corresponding density. Next, I'd like to go through the city's criteria, nine different criteria for approval of the Outline Development Plan and Preliminary Development Plan. These are in your packet. They have been entered into the record as the applicant's explanation. Rather than read through that entire document, I will just summarize those and paraphrase as briefly as I can. So, first item is consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. As Cheryl indicated, there are at least three different plans that overlap in this area. All of those plans recommend multifamily development at a higher density, which is exactly what this ODP amendment is proposing. This PUD is consistent with the previous PUD in that it is the same land use that is proposed, and again, it's a slight adjustment to the density with the goal of increasing the choice of housing and living environments and enacting the city's goal of having a higher-intensity transit-oriented development in this area. The Outline Development Plan does comply with the applicable use development and design standards within the city. There are a few modifications that are being requested. Those are mostly of a technical nature, and what they really all relate to is that many of the city's standards for multifamily development were crafted for a garden-style, more typical suburban orientation than this. So, where we're asking for variations is in order to allow this property to develop in the higher-density, more urban type of development that the city plan recommends for this area. Next item is integrating the connections within the PUD and surrounding properties. This property and this amendment retains the same vehicular and pedestrian connections that were originally envisioned and, in fact, are accentuated a bit by the Preliminary Development Plan that we are proposing. There are no adverse impacts that are anticipated by this project on any adjacent properties. All services to serve the property are in existence and are available to continue at the same level of service as currently exists. And finally, it is compatible with the PUD in general because the land use is not changing, and that compatibility was established by the original PUD and by the various master plans that cover this particular area. Final item is the criteria for approval of the Height Exception, and that, again, is to, for a portion of some of the buildings, to change that from the city's standard 35 feet to a maximum of 55 feet. The benefit to the city is demonstrated in this application in that allowing that additional height is the thing that allows the additional density the city wants to see at this particular location. Without the four-story buildings, there isn't a way to achieve the minimum of 20 units per acre and, hopefully, by the city plan, higher that is encouraged for this property. So, that's the reason for the Height Exception. Again, the applicable zoning regulations will be met to the extent that they apply to this property and with certain modifications to allow the more urban-style development that is envisioned for this site. As stated before, the approval of this Height Exception will not interfere with the city's ability to provide services. The project does comply with the currently adopted fire department regulations, and as we have concurrence from the fire department in that regard. And the final item is that the architecture and character of this project will be, we believe, exemplary, better than really anything that is adjacent in the surrounding area. And this is the good part of the presentation, which is where Chris comes up and shows you the images of what's being presented so you can see the exemplary architecture and site design that's being proposed. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Chairman Kraus, my name is Chris Grady, G.R.A.D.Y. I'm with Kepphart Community Planning Architecture, 2555 Walnut Street, Denver, 80205. At Kepphart, we believe everyone deserves a well-designed place to live, and I feel it really starts with us. We've enjoyed working with Embry Partners for many years, and Rich, and this entire team, and the city of Arvada, to imagine Arvada Ridge, a neighborhood with soul, with great amenities, market-responsive floor plans, attractive signature architecture, and an excellent location near the commuter rail station. So, let's review some of the site characteristics for a moment. And I apologize, I'm going to use the pointer a few times, and Commissioner Hannan, I may, I'm trying not to poke you in the eye with the laser pointer. Okay, the site plan is oriented north, up is north. The plan is 10.7 acres. Ridge Street is on the south. Lee Street is to the west, over to the left, and to the east on the right is Kipling Parkway. There's approximately 50 feet of grade from the north going down to the south. So, this has been a really challenging site, and it's really important that we take a very sensitive approach to residential design to minimize grading. The residential buildings are, again, as Jeff Booth had mentioned, they are four-story. The main buildings, the main five buildings are four-story, elevator-served, center hall design, with the exception of the building, the larger building to the north here, which is a 4-3 split, and that's a grade-sensitive design. We also introduced carriage buildings as well within the parking, and I'll get to those in a second, and then a clubhouse at the north side along Lee Street. The plan contemplates 296 units, 263-plex L-shaped buildings on the south side, 256-plex buildings, they're the longer buildings on the east and the west, 46-unit building, which is our 4-3 split, and then we have four carriage buildings in the center of the plan here and along Lee Street. The carriage building is a single-level residence over garages, so it's a two-story structure, and in this case, it is three units over six garages. 69% of the units are studios in one bedrooms, 31% are two bedrooms. We have no three-bedroom units in the program. The square-footage range is 605 square feet to 1,272, and the average is 897. The buildings are situated closer to the street where possible for a more urban character to encourage pedestrian interaction and maintain the character anticipated by the Framework Plan. So, along Lee Street on the west, we try to keep those buildings as close to the street as possible. On the south side, we are using that area for our detention and storm chambers, but it became an awesome opportunity to create a public park as well along Ridge Road. And then on the east side along Kipling, there's quite a bit of grade difference between the units and Kipling Parkway, so we've got more of a landscape buffer along that edge. There are two primary entries to the site. The main one, one of the main ones, is along Ridge Road. The second is along Lee Street. And then our third access or an entry point is to the clubhouse to the north, which has great views, excellent visibility, and it's a very prominent location. To strengthen the urban character of the plan, parking is internalized and visually softened by the placement of the carriage buildings. So, in this area here, having these buildings toward the edges and the parking internalized, we visually soften it by- we visually soften it by placement of the carriage buildings, the detached garages, carports within that open parking field. Parking for the project is incorporated as attached within these buildings, these five buildings. We also have carports in the open parking. There are detached garages in the open parking area and then carriage units as well. Some of the open space features that we'll talk about here, and this is really the best plan to describe this, we have some perspectives as well. But the primary placemaking design idea is to create an image and identity for the community as a place for art. The plan envisions strong pedestrian connections which link a series of open spaces with an urban character incorporating art or temporary spaces for art installations. The signature place is the Artside Park and Plaza to the south along Ridge Road. It contemplates a significant art feature at the corner of Lee Street and Ridge, elevated plaza area with additional opportunities for art and site furnishings. It includes gathering areas for public and the residents of Arvada Ridge to enjoy. This area also provides excellent connections to an open lawn, and we engage that edge by providing access to those first-level units as well. We then introduce a pedestrian promenade north-south through the center of the site, and you'll see that right here. This really becomes a very strong, functional, visual pedestrian connection linking amenities, other gathering spaces, right through to the RTD bus stop on the north at Kipling. There's also an amenity plaza area to the center, which is our mail kiosk. And then we also have a very dramatic entry and gateway through Building 5, which allows a connection to the clubhouse. So from Ridge Road, we've got strong landscaping, wide sidewalks, the amenity area with the mail kiosk, opportunities for art installations, the gateway through Building 5, and then to the clubhouse and a bus stop. Lee Street also includes some excellent landscaping along this edge, and we also have an opportunity for additional art installations and a public seating area. And then to top that off, we've got a, we tie that up with a east-west connection. Little harder to see on this plan, but on the north side of the carriage buildings, there's some landscape, significant walkway through there. And then along the east side of the project, we have a dog park and a dog wash area and I like this plan because it really gives a great flavor for the urban character of Arvada Ridge. And this is looking from the south. Here's Ridge Road, Kipling Parkway. You can see that grade difference here, so a little stronger landscape buffer, but this is that very strong edge in that public park adjacent to the rail station. We're really proud of our clubhouse for Arvada Ridge. It's a two-story structure. The square footage is 7,800. The picture you're seeing here is the front-entry view from Lee Street. The clubhouse includes the leasing functions, fitness, yoga, a business center, kitchen and game room, a great room, and then there is also an upper deck area, which you'll see in a minute. The back of the clubhouse includes a resort-style pool, deck, and spa with barbecue and picnic areas. And, you know, this really is a prominent location on the site because it's that high side of the site. So it's got excellent views and visibility. A little bit about the architecture. This is the 63-plex building. We're looking from the internal portion of the site from the auto courts. Again, four-story residential structure. We're including two-story carriage buildings, which you'll see in a moment. Clubhouse right down to the detached garage really exhibits a distinctive contemporary four-sided architectural design. All the buildings have flat roofs, and that's a great opportunity for us to get our condensers not on the ground but on the roof so that we keep more landscaping along the buildings and street edges. We include well-organized massing and breaks at the roof. You can see a parapet design that we also take the opportunity to raise stair towers and elevator overruns to create a really nice edge along that parapet. The elevations include divided windows, exterior decks and patios, a varied color palette, and distinctive materials including stucco and stone veneers, wood-toned siding, and The next image is also an internal view, and it really shows how the, you're actually seeing the garage structure off to the left here, but it really shows how the architectural compatibility is so important, and also that garage, the carriage units, the landscaping within the auto court really breaks up that parking quite well. And again, you're seeing that the architectural character is carried out with all of the building types. The next image, you're seeing the carriage building, and again, we're showing how the architectural design is carried through the four-story structures, the clubhouse, and again, the carriage units and the detached garages. That concludes my presentation. I'd like to bring up John Norris from Norris Design. He's going to spend a little time talking about the public park and that southern edge along Ridge Road and speak in a little more detail about that.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is John Norris. I'm with Norris Design, a land planning and landscape architectural firm. We're at 1101 South Bannock Street, Denver, Colorado. So when Jeff asked me to begin working on this project, he asked me to come up with an idea for how we could make this a special place, and I guess I'm probably the one that was responsible for coming up with the Art Walk idea. And I knew it would be a special idea, and it didn't take him and Jimmy very long to embrace that idea. We pitched it to the staff, and I think they embraced it as well. We've had a great time working with both Cheryl and Sarah with Parks and Rec, and I would echo what Jeff said. They're very diligent in making sure that we are doing the right things and coming up with great ideas for the city. So the Art Walk Park, I want to just focus a little bit, and I'll use this pointer as well. The key to the thing, as I see it, was having this beautiful green frontage along Ridge Road as motorists pass by and as people pass by on the light rail as well. We think it will give not only our project but the city a great green foreground, if you will, for this new project in and around the light rail station. So some of the real facets of it are this pedestrian plaza at the corner, and I'm looking forward to working with Parks and Rec again to help select the sculpture that will kind of highlight this piece. Other places for sculpture are in these little nodes here. There's three, I think, three more or four more down here along this, along what I call the Art Walk. So we're envisioning that this walk is enriched and enlivened by these art pieces. There's also a little bit of grade change. They mentioned 50 feet. So one of the things was we have a retaining wall, and these buildings sit up about four or five feet above the park itself. So what we designed, we came up with these nodes, and you'll see in the elevation, we have some enlargements of that, that we're taking special care to detail how the stairways go back up to the units, and they're typically highlighted by some art and special lighting at those locations as well. There's also a secondary, we're changing the grade in this kind of secondary plaza area as well so that you could sit up and have a few picnic tables and chairs and tables in this location as well. They also mentioned, let's go to the next one here, see if I can do this. Oops, I went the wrong way, of course. How do I do it? It's the middle one, okay. So here's an enlargement of the elevation of that park. And you start to see, we layered in some different kinds of things to give it some depth. So you start to see the different colors. I know the lighting in here is a little difficult, but we came up with a new idea, and Sarah challenged us to come up with some different ideas for how to get that depth into the park. One of the challenges was that a lot of the park has the underground storm drainage pieces, and we weren't able to do, we weren't able to use necessarily retaining walls that had foundations to them. So we came up with an idea to use a metal planting area so we could get some small trees included in these areas and let people walk not only in front of those planters but behind them. So we're envisioning very colorful plantings throughout the year and those kinds of things. There's also special lighting that's been selected as very, it's kind of in a contemporary form. I don't have a great image of that for you. And then lastly, we've included some of those same ideas and some of the same angular kinds of designs in the north-south promenade as well as on Lee Street and the pedestrian walkway from the thing down Lee Street. And then finally, I guess, one of our ideas is that we would use the opportunity to identify our project with our signage, and we know that you have a new sign code that you're working on. We're envisioning a very artistic kind of building sign in this location right at that corner to help kind of enliven and put another artistic flair in that area. And again, also a kind of a unique signage and identification piece down at the Kipling and Lee Street entrance as well. So we're looking forward to seeing that new sign code come out so that we can be sure that we're responding to that at some point in time. With that, I'll conclude and turn it back over to Jeff. Thanks, everyone.
Well, I hope it's easy for you to see how lucky I've been to be surrounded by this kind of talent for the last 20 years, just to see their approach and the creativity that goes into really making special places is just remarkable to me, and I feel very fortunate to work with a team like this. It's also been exciting, you know, from our neighborhood meeting that we had where Cheryl joined us when we presented our ideas on this site to the neighborhood, the neighbors that came only had positive thoughts. They were excited that something's finally going to happen to that. You know, they wanted to see something happen there, and when we showed them, you know, the elevations, and it was going to be four-story, I remember one particular resident said, "Four stories? Well, that's not so tall." So it was really nice to see that it was embraced by the community, and now the staff has completely supported the final ideas after we've gone through the gauntlet of different, you know, manipulations to really meet all the guidelines of the city, to have the staff's full support, to have the neighborhood onboard. We're just very excited, and I hope if you have any questions, we've got a full team here to respond and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
I'll now open the meeting for comments from the public. First, those that are in favor of the application. If you wish to speak, please come up, state your name, spell it, please, and give your address for the record. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, state your name, spell it, please, and give us your address for the record.
Hello, commissioners. Hello. My name is Thomas Bricky. I live at 5398 Owens Street, Arvada, near the community and propose.
Spell your name, please.
It's Thomas Bricky, B-R-I-C-K-E-Y.
Great.
Thank you. And my concern this evening, you know, I'm a nearby resident, and I, you know, as opposed to some of the fine folk here, I will be directly affected by this development, I and my family. I don't at all contest that the development looks nice. I agree that Arvada Ridge 1 is an attractive development. My concern is the degree of density. I think part of the pitch here is that these residents of the new structures will use the light rail, and that may be true to some degree, but I work in the hospital district downtown. There is no way for me to get downtown using public transportation in a reasonable amount of time. I must use a car. Further, you know, to these future tenants, precisely none of them will go to Costco or to the bank or to their doctor's office or to the mountains via public transportation. They will all have cars. With 290 units, times, I believe, it was 1.6 cars per unit expected per the online proposal documents equals roughly 473 cars added in this development. The major means of egress appears to be Ridge Road. It is two lanes. It's not very wide, and I just, I worry about that. The density that we are adding is so great, you know, already just to the west on Ridge Road, there's 25 more houses going in presently. So that's my concern. I think it will be a nice community, but I would ask you as a citizen to perhaps not permit the fourth story, just to keep it at three levels, thus reducing the density of the site. Further, four stories is out of character with local structures. Nothing is that tall in the neighborhood. So that's my perspective. Again, I think it'll be a nice development. I wish we would not add a fourth story, making it so dense as it will be. So, thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to the application? Would the applicant like the opportunity for a rebuttal?
Yes, thank you. Really appreciate those comments. I think the one perhaps erroneous assumption is that the Ridge Road access is the main access. That's actually the secondary access. So if you look at the site plan, let's see if I can get back to it here. We're really expecting the main access to be coming off of a new lighted intersection here at Kipling, and so that's why the clubhouse is up here at this north point because the traffic along Kipling is going to see the project. It's going to be very prominent. The clubhouse will be extremely prominent at the corner. It'll be obvious to turn in the new lighted intersection here and enter the clubhouse here for all the leasing. And then for residents, they can access out to Lee Street, get right back to a lighted intersection, and go north or south on Kipling, probably likely in many cases to go to work south on Kipling to I-70. So Ridge Road is really the secondary access point, and we really don't expect much traffic at all on Ridge Road. So I hope that addresses some of your concerns. And again, we're following within the guidelines of the height criteria, you know, more density for these light rail station locations, which is, you know, kind of the planning mantra nationwide is to increase density at the light rail stations in order to remove more traffic from the infrastructure and get more people oriented toward using the new multimodal systems. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public input portion of the hearing. I now open the hearing for discussion, questions, or comments from members of the Planning Commission. Mr. Hanon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got a couple here. For staff, it said that the art is owner's discretion art. Does that mean I could end up with a blue horse with shidy red Does that mean I could end up with a blue horse with shidy red eyes?
You beat me to it, Mr. Hannan.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I'm just a little concerned about owner discretion. It could be a plaster of Paris thing stuck in there. How does that work?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Hannan. We've actually been working with the applicant on art selection in, through their FDP process already. The art timeframe for installation will be part of the development agreement and the art will be chosen in conjunction with staff. So far, the artworks selected and, you know, tentatively proposed are enduring steel-type structures that you would typically see in a sculpture park like that at Arvada Center. So we're encouraged by that process and everything you've seen to date is in line with the way the art would be going.
Excellent, thank you. Another question for staff. Parking numbers? How would I, how much parking would I normally have if this was on 60, 58th and Wadsworth?
That's going to depend on the project. If this is, if it was the same type of project, we're basing the, first of all, the numbers that are required by the Land Development Code strictly on the bedroom mix. So that would be the same. What we are doing here is we are supporting a reduced number, which is down from 2.02 units, our spaces per unit, down to the 1.6 spaces per unit based on the location in relation to the rail, because we do anticipate that there will be a higher utilization of the rail and a need for fewer parking spaces.
Okay, there's not much in the area that you could go park at other than here, so we think that really will be sufficient? Or are we betting on a future of rail and rail-oriented transit?
We are definitely counting on the use of rail. It's very customary to see development adjacent to rail stations at a higher density with lower parking ratios. And generally, you don't want to overpark these types of developments because you want to encourage use of the rail. And the type of tenant that's going to move into this location is probably going to be looking for a development where they can use the rail. So someone who might, for example, the citizen who spoke about easy access to his place of employment, you will probably see people who have taken that into consideration and their places of employment are going to be easily accessed from the rail.
Excellent, thank you. Size of this compared to other projects in the neighborhood? 50-plus feet sounds awful high.
This will be the highest development in this immediate area. One thing to note is that the 50, it's 53-three-foot number is really to the top of the stair tower. Normally, we measure under our definition of heights in our code to the roof line, which is, in this case, is 45 feet. We don't have an exemption for the stair tower, so that's why we have that additional height there.
Okay. We've talked about things stuck on the roof, the equipment on the roof. Is there going to be screening for that or is it high enough that it won't be visible?
We anticipate that the parapets are going to take care of that, but the architect could probably speak to that a little bit more.
Chris Grady from Kappa. Yeah. The parapets do give a bit of screening on that and then there is also a, an internal wall which carries some of the infrastructure, which provides some of that screening as well.
Okay. How's the height of this compared to Arvada Station?
Arvada Station being the existing apartments?
Yeah, the existing apartments.
Those are three-story buildings. And I don't have the height off the top of my head. I believe there was a height exception that we had at that project as well. I just don't remember the number, but it is three versus four stories.
Okay. For the applicant, did we look at three stories? Since that is more consistent with what is in the existing area at the moment?
Yes, but the density required to meet the city's guidelines couldn't be, couldn't be made with a three-story. That's really the difference.
Thank you, Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions. One is mainly the new access point, it's like to the north on Kipling. Is that, because I do drive that road every day, I'm just curious as to where that elevation is. Is it fairly, is this area flat with Kipling at this point where that new intersection is at?
It is near the High Point. It is near the High Point.
Near the High Point, okay.
Just need your name and address.
John Stafford, S-T-A-F-F-O-R-D, I'm with Harris Coker Smith at 1120 Lincoln Street, Denver, Colorado, 80203. It is right about the crest of Kipling. I forget the exact grades at that intersection, but they're around 2% cross slope at the, or longitudinal slope at the peak.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. Another question was just related to the signage. I do see, seem like minimal signage, which seems nice in terms of the facility, it would be in align with the new sign code, is what I heard. Is it just going to be, is the signage just going to be on the side of the building with some directional points on the ground or is there, could be some pedestal signs for the facility as well?
Hi, it's John Norris again. We're kind of waiting to see the new sign code first before we really jump into it to make sure that we're complying with the code the way it's written, but it hasn't come out yet, so we're kind of waiting for it. But the intention that we, what we understand is that we would try to have a building-mounted sign in this location, at this corner, that kind of faces Ridge Road and the light rail. And that we'd also have kind of a pedestrian location really near the bus stop on this end. And our idea is that it would be more of a obelisk-type sign, that you can be seen from many directions. We have kind of an odd, an odd intersection here with kind of streets coming from every direction, so we felt that an obelisk-type sign might be appropriate there. And then we'll have some very short directional signs showing people, you know, at their entry points, you know, how and where they can find their address that they're looking for.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Commissioner. Thank you. Ms. Caswell?
My question was answered, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple of questions for staff and I think maybe one for the applicant. So one of the conditions for approval is around gaining access to easements for the Lee Street development. Do we anticipate any issues with neighboring property owners in order to get those easements in place?
I don't believe so. Excuse me. Both the applicant's attorneys and our attorney, as well as attorneys for the Denver Water Board, Valley Water District, the Wheatwood Regional Center, and Red Rocks Community College have been working on this issue for some time, very diligently. And we believe we have a resolution of that and there's not going to be any further issues in acquiring those easements at the time of final development plan.
Okay, thank you. So a quick question, again, I think for staff on parking. One of the areas that appears a little light to me is parking for the clubhouse. I mean, typically in these kinds of facilities, you do have non-residents that are coming for different things. And there's really no other nearby parking, given the placement of the large building to the south. There's not a good place or an obvious place for visitors to park and then access that facility. Do we think that the parking spaces as designed are sufficient for a facility like that that will have some coming and going for non-residents? Especially, again, given that the rental center is there as well.
We believe so. It seems to me that there's adequate parking for those uses that you mentioned. And again, we anticipate the majority of the use of the clubhouse is going to be from the residents from the south, where they'll use the pedestrian access up through that building five, I believe it is, up to the level where we have the clubhouse.
Okay, thank you.
Just like to know the number of parking spaces for the clubhouse as designed? Thank you.
Yeah, that may be something you want to revisit. I think one more quick question for staff. So given the current state of the sign code, and I know it's in the process of approval, but kind of given where we are now, do you see anything as described that would require the applicant to go the route of the alternative sign program or do you think it would largely be covered?
At this point, our preliminary analysis indicates that the signage that they are proposing would be in compliance with our new sign code. So we don't anticipate that there will be a need for an alternative sign program at this time. Of course, the applicant may want to revisit that and depending on what they end up proposing, we may end up going that direction, but at this time, we don't think so.
Okay, thank you. So one quick question for the applicant. The gateway through, I believe it's building five to access the clubhouse, how is that, how is that going to work? Is that a secured entry that other building residents will then have to also use? Just a little bit about how that's, because that seems to be kind of a key feature and I'm just curious how that's going to work.
Yeah, all these corridors will be secured, but all the residents will have access through them.
Okay.
So the residents will have a fob, they can, you know, walk up and gain access through that building and get up to the clubhouse. Or they can go around it to the east side, past the dog park. There's a walk that gets around to the clubhouse that direction.
So there is an alternative way to access, great.
I wanted to give you just a little comfort on the parking, if I could add something related to the parking. So we never count on the light rail saving us because the first phase was built knowing that there was going to be a light rail station, but also knowing it was not going to be open until our project was completely full. So Arvada Station was designed knowing that that was not going to be there for the residents. And the parking ratio, we get really granular. I mean, after doing this for 43 years, it's not just about spaces per unit. We really get into how many spaces per bedroom. And that's the real test because every project has different mixes and that can really throw you off if it's just on a per-unit basis. So on a per-bedroom basis, we actually have a higher ratio per bedroom in this project than we had in the first phase. And the first phase worked without any light rail, so the ratio's better on this and we also have no three bedrooms in this new phase. So there's a couple of different ways. We've really been even more conservative on the parking here, even though the rail station will be open when this, well, we all assume it'll be open. But we just never count on that and I know many codes count on a reduction, but we've been doing this a long time and it's got to work without it, is the way we approach it. It's an amenity and a benefit, but we don't count on it.
Okay. And a quick question too, while you're up here, on the Lee Street versus Ridge Road access. I agree with you that Lee Street's probably going to be the primary. Have you done any analysis to say kind of what you believe that split of access between the Lee Street entrance and the Ridge Road access is going to be?
You know, I'm going to let Devon. Have you got some analysis on that, Devon, that you thought about?
That would be great.
Hi, my name is Devon Joslin, J-O-S-L-I-N. I'm a transportation engineer at Felsberg Holton Ulevig, 6300 South Syracuse Way, Suite 600 Centennial, Colorado, 80111. Our traffic impact study assigned 70% of the traffic up Lee Street to use the new access to Kipling and the other 30% was assigned to Ridge Road, split equally to the east and to the west.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions or comments from the planning commissioners? Then seeing no further motion, discussion, is there a motion?
Yeah.
Ms. Caswell?
A quick comment first. I think the, we tend to overpark sites these days. We end up with huge parking fields, so in accord with our goals around transit areas, I'm not concerned about the number of parking spaces for the project as a whole. I do have some concerns. I think you're underparked in terms of how many spaces you have at the clubhouse. It's a beautiful amenity and it would be really a shame not to have people be able to use it effectively because it's not parked adequately at that point on the site. I know it's a tight point on the site, but I think that is one thing that you need to take a look at. And as to the height, 53 feet is high. I think that, you know, again, we are encouraging this kind of density with sites near transit. I have driven Ridge Road nearly every day for a decade. This would be an amenity to that area for certain. It certainly will also be a project of some serious mass and scale, no question about it. One mitigating factor that I think plays in support of that, however, is that it is kind of tucked in at that grade. So it's not in a higher or flat area where you're going to have sightlines to those rooftops. So for all those reasons, I'm in support of the application and the detail and the quality of the project looks very good. So I would move that ODP 2016-0002 ODP Ridge Center Outline Development Plan Amendment Nine located at 10285 Ridge Road be recommended to City Council for approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages 12 and 13 of the staff report.
Is there any discussion of the motion?
I do want to make a comment at this point and directly to the input provided by the local resident. I think all of us have been struggling with, for some time now, with what the impact of the gold line will be, or at this point, whether the gold line will come. But I think if you look at some of the development that was done in anticipation of light rail coming in, the transit-oriented development that is happening around it, I think if we go all the way back to things like the water tower developments that were really done quite some time ago, but anticipation that at some point it would come. This certainly is a higher density than the rest of Arvada and some of, obviously, to the first development on the property. I think we'll have to see. I don't have an opinion either way yet. I think we will really have to see what impact it has. And hopefully, we will start to be able to look at what that impact is soon and that will therefore influence the decisions that we make going forward. I agree, it is new. It's something that, as a city, Arvada has been pushing for, for some time in this transportation corridor, and I think we're going to all have to see the impact that it really has. Hopefully, it all works out the way that we hope it will, but we'll have to wait and see. But I obviously share your same concerns.
Mr. Hannan?
One comment. First of the applicant, great job. Appreciate it. It's very thoughtful, very, very well-thought-out approach. I like the addition of art as opposed to just another apartment building, so well done. I wouldn't have had a real problem with Arvada Station picked up and moved there and duplicated, but I appreciate that you didn't do that and went ahead and looked at something that's a little different, a little more modern, a little more transit-oriented than Arvada Station is, which could easily be at Keystone. So well done on that. To the comment from the public, I know there are many places in Denver, Denver Health being one, that are looking at starting shuttles from train stations to Denver Health Medical Center and I'm sure St. Joe's, as they rebuild, and others will be looking at the same thing. I think as if we ever get light rail, I'd go you, if we ever see light rail, we're going to find lots of things in Denver will change to look more like DC where everybody has a shuttle that runs to the station and takes you into the Pentagon or wherever you have any working. So I hope that really happens here and for those reasons, I also will be supporting.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also share Commissioner Hannan's thoughts and comments. I think it's a really well-thought-out project. I honestly, I really like the idea of having a dog wash and bike maintenance facility. It seems like that's really fitting for those who would live here and just the community in general, it just seems like a really well-thought-out project and very visually appealing. So I too am in support of the project, so it just seems very well-done.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Seeing there is no further discussion, commissioners, please cast your votes. The motion passes four votes to none. Do I have another motion?
Yes. I also move that HE 2016-
We need to do the PDP first.
I'm sorry, I've got one ahead of myself. I move that PDP 2016-0002 Arvada Ridge Apartments Number Two Preliminary Development Plan located at 10285 Ridge Road be recommended to City Council for approval, subject to the conditions stated in the staff report, items one through three, pages, page 16, with the additional condition that the applicant work with staff to see if there is a feasible way to increase parking spaces, not the total number of parking spaces in the project, but parking spaces that will be at, that will directly service the clubhouse.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Is staff good with the addition as discussed?
Yes, we can work with that.
All right, thank you. Then commissioners, please cast your votes. The motion passes four votes to none.
And finally, I move that HE 2016-0001 Arvada Ridge Apartments Number Two Height Exception to allow up to 55 feet be recommended to City Council for approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on page 15 of the staff report.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Mr. Hannan?
The height is a concern for me. The fact, however, that it is only at the stairways and the elevator towers really helps a lot with that, similar to Old Town Station where we also had a height issue and the fact that it was just a few places, but made it very helpful. So I appreciate you doing that.
Ms. Caswell?
I just need to add one thing for the record. The prior motion on the PDP, I neglected to say that that motion was based on the findings of fact and approval criteria based on pages 13, 14, and 15 of the staff report, so I would add that to my motion unless there's an objection. Mr. Sampson, is that acceptable? Thank you. All right, that's all I needed to add. I just realized that that was left off the record.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, commissioners, please cast your votes. The motion carries four votes to none. So I want to again thank, as everyone else, thank the developer for a very helpful presentation, very thorough. Please be sure to work with staff when the item will be going before City Council and I thank you and citizens for participating in the hearing this evening. Staff, do we have any other items for consideration this evening?
I just wanted to give you an update on your next meeting, which will be December 6. You'll have three items on the agenda. One will be action on the sign code and then we will have two rezoning cases. One is for the IVICI building at 6275 Sims. That application also includes a conditional use permit. And then a zoning for Galloway Estates, which is at 5905 West 60th Avenue.
Okay, thank you. There's no other items?
Just one.
Oh, Ms. Caswell?
Sorry, I just wanted to get on the record for Joanie that I will be out of state December I would rather be here, I'll be in Minneapolis.
Then we are adjourned.